This current meeting will be available to be viewed on Facebook and Zoom, but currently we're still having problems with our cable connection. So with that announcement, do we have any other announcements? Mayor Protam, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Since I'm Zooming, I didn't know if I was going to be able to have, be at this meeting. So I don't have any announcements unless somebody else has announcements other than, I'd just like to thank all of our firefighters and volunteers and sheriff's departments and everybody that had such a wonderful effort on the Crooks Fire. And I guess they're still mopping up to make sure it doesn't flare up again. So I just wanted to express our heartfelt appreciation.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I think Councilwoman Montoya was being, he was prepared with Plan B, so.
Okay, good.
Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have some announcements. The first one is the city's general plan is due for an update. In accordance with state law, cities and towns are required to update their general plans at least once every 10 years. Our last general plan was adopted by 80% of the voters in 2015. Community development staff will be presenting an overview of the entire process at the council voting meeting on May 24th. The first order of business will be to establish the 2025 General Plan Committee. The committee will be comprised of residents selected by each member of council, appointees from the Planning and Zoning Commission, Prescott Preservation Commission, and Board of Adjustment, along with two council liaisons. If you are interested in sitting on a committee, please make sure, make your desire to participate known to a council member. The General Plan Committee will establish, will be established by resolution at the July 26th voting meeting. Additionally, the city of Prescott's first budget workshop for fiscal year 2023 is scheduled for May 17th at 1:00 PM in the council chambers at 201 South Cortez Street. The budget documents and other important dates can be found on the city's website. From the homepage, click on City Management, then Budget and Finance. The Friends of the Public Prescott Library is pleased to begin seeking ideas from the community about what they would like to see in a proposed new branch library. Two general public meetings will be held at the Founder's Suite on the first floor of Prescott Public Library at 215 East Goodwin Street in Prescott, with additional opportunities to participate in groups with special focus. Wednesday, May 11th, 1:00 to 2:00 PM, community meeting, open meeting for the general public. 4:00 to 5:00, teen meeting, meeting for individuals, groups, and organizations associated with teens and teen concerns. Thursday, May 12th, 4:00 to 5:00, educational community meeting for persons and groups associated with education and educational needs. 5:30 to 6:30, community meeting, open to the meeting for the general public. And Friday, May 13th, 9:00 to 10:00, older adults, persons with disabilities, meeting for individuals, groups, and organizations associated with older adults or persons with disabilities and associated concerns. For questions about the upcoming community meetings, please contact the Prescott Public Library at 928-777-1500.
Thank you very much, Councilman. We'll now have an invocation by Pastor Scott Savage from the Prescott Cornerstone Church, followed by a Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to call a beautiful place like Prescott home. We pray for this meeting today that you would guide our leaders with wisdom. You tell us in the scriptures that if any of us lacks wisdom, we can ask you, and you give generously. We pray that you'd guide them with integrity, that they would seek to steward their responsibility as leaders, as NTU, and we pray that they would walk as servants. Jesus himself said that he did not come to be served, but to serve. And we pray that they would take seriously and joyfully their opportunity to serve our community. We pray that our community would flourish and that we would have an opportunity to call this place home for many years. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag. My pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, to the republic of which this stands, to the nation of God, to the visible, visible, and to the freedom of choice.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Hall.
Here.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Shishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
Thank you very much. We now have three proclamations. We'll start off with National Nurses Week, presented by Councilwoman Montoya.
Are there folks here for National Nurses Week? You want to come up here? Good, how are you? Okay. Proclamation for National Nurses Week, which is May 6th through 12th, 2022. Whereas the city of Prescott is pleased to join Dignity Health Yavapai Regional Medical Center located in our city as it celebrates National Nurses Week, May 6th through 12th, 2022, and whereas registered nurses constitute our community's largest healthcare profession, and whereas the depth and breadth of registered nurses, nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of our community in a wide range of settings, including the frontline of the pandemic, and whereas professional nursing is an indispensable component of the safety and quality of care of hospitalized and non-hospitalized patients, and whereas we commend the nursing staff at Dignity Health Yavapai Regional Medical Center for extending themselves in service to others according to their commitment of improving patient outcomes. Now therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim May 6th through May 12th of 2022 as National Nurses Week. Would you guys, it looks like you have someone who wants to take a picture, so you want to turn around and face, and I'll hold up the proclamation? Hold on. Would any of you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. I'm Tracy McCollum, the chief nursing officer from the hospital. Happy to be here and on behalf of Dignity Health. I want to thank Mayor Good and the city council for recognizing the importance of, the important role nurses play in the delivery of healthcare in our community. Nursing is much more than a career. It's actually a calling and a promise to put others first. During the past two years, nurses have served on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic to provide care and comfort to the most vulnerable among us. Nursing's contributions to the COVID response are immeasurable. During National Nurses Week, we celebrate nursing at Dignity Health Yavapai Regional Medical Center, and we thank you for this important recognition.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have a proclamation for Yavapai Humane Society, presented by Councilwoman Hall.
Hi. Good afternoon. Thank you guys for all coming. Wonderful. Well, we have a proclamation for Yavapai Humane Society Day, May 14th, 2022. Whereas Yavapai Humane Society has been serving the pets and people of Yavapai County since 1972, and whereas Yavapai Humane Society shelters and rehomes pets in needs, pets in need, and whereas Yavapai Humane Society currently provides shelter, medical care, and spay and neuter services to over 3,000 owners surrendered and stray dogs, cats, and horses annually, and whereas Yavapai Humane Society completes families by connecting families and individuals with wonderful, adoptable companion animals. And whereas Yavapai Humane Society provides specialized programs for veterans, senior citizens, and those in need. And whereas Yavapai Humane Society has continually evolved its services to meet the needs of the community, building and reinforcing the bond between pets and people. And whereas Yavapai Humane Society provides services to the community through their thrift store, equine center, spay, neuter, and wellness clinic, adoption center, and lost and found. And whereas animal lovers and supporters are celebrating the 50th anniversary of Yavapai Humane Society. Now therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the city of Prescott, does hereby proclaim May 14th, 2022, as Yavapai Humane Society Day, and applauds the volunteers and employees of Yavapai Humane Society for their devoted service to the homeless pets and the people of Yavapai County. He urges all citizens to say a warm thank you and celebrate the anniversary of their 50 years of service in our community. Yeah, thank you. Do you guys want to say something or take a picture?
Yeah, let's do a picture.
First of all, thank you, Jessica. Thank you so much. I want to say thank you, Mayor Good, and the rest of the city council. You know, Yavapai Humane Society, as Jessica mentioned, has been around for 50 years. And we are honored, deeply honored, that we're partners with the city of Prescott. So thank you again, and also thank you to the residents of Prescott. Judy, do you want to say anything? Okay. All right, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have a proclamation regarding Emergency Medical Services Week, presented by Councilman Shishka.
Yavapai guys, come on down. Come on, guys. You even let Ralph come with you. Hey, man, how are you? Everyone, this is a proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week, May 15th through 21st, 2022. There's a whole bunch of wheres, so please pardon me. Whereas, emergency medical services are a vital public safety service, and whereas, this year's theme is Rising to the Challenge. The members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas throughout the current public health emergency, our country is faced related to COVID-19, this team has stood out in the front lines. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others, and that happened in one breath. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the city of Prescott, Arizona, does hereby recognize the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme Rising to the Challenge, he encourages the community to recognize and thank our frontline heroes who are dedicated to providing emergency medical services that save so many lives every day. Could we have a hand for these guys? Who's your name, Seth?
I guess I'm getting pushed forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can I do a photo real quick? Ready? Chief, would you like, somebody like to say something?
Sure.
Please.
As you can tell, I've got some very typical firefighters. They're running away from public recognition as fast as they can. So just real quick, thank you so much for the recognition, Mayor, council. We really appreciate the opportunity to highlight emergency medical services. The fire department call volume is approximately 70% EMS. Fire is part of our mission, but it is not the primary mission of this department. And I would say probably about 90% of the calls were there because there's a potential for a patient as well, even if we're there for a technical rescue event. It's also very appropriate that we're here at the same time that the nurses are here because it's a system that works collaboratively together from the pre-hospital environment all the way into the hospital. And so we thank our nurses as well as we get recognized for EMS. So thank you very much.
We'll move on to the open call to the public.
The city of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address council on matters which are not included on the agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. I do not have any green comment cards at this time, Mayor.
Very well. With no public response to that opportunity, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull any items off of the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through 8C.
Second. Have a motion in second, please vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Rusing votes aye.
Pass the 7-0.
Excellent. We'll move on to the regular agenda, and we'll start with a legislative update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Tyler Goodman with the city manager's office. Pull up the legislative agenda. Here we go. I wish I had something more substantive to share with you. Again, this is probably the third meeting in a row that really nothing has changed. Speaking with Barry Ehrens and getting some information from the League of Cities, budget discussions are still the topic, and they're still happening largely behind the scenes. There are talks of a bipartisan effort, since it doesn't seem that the votes are there to get a purely partisan budget passed, and that's really all we're hearing. Otherwise, the bills that we've been tracking all legislative session haven't really gone anywhere except for one, which I'll mention quickly, and that is the, make sure I get the right number here, House Bill 2674. This is the Housing Supply Study Committee bill that was passed and signed by the governor. And as cities, we will have the opportunity to appoint two representatives of the 10-member committee. That's yet to be seen, but I know that there's a lot of interest in making sure that those are good representatives on behalf of cities. So the league is very involved in that as well. Besides that, it's pretty much status quo, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Tyler, that means that there will be two city representatives from the Arizona League or out of the 91 towns and cities in our state?
Out of the 91, and it's unclear to me right now how that's going to be determined. It might be by the chair of the committee, and so because of that, the league is very involved with how that's going to unfold and making sure there's a good voice to make sure it's good representation.
We'll have to see how that develops. Any other questions or comments? Oh, I know that there are a lot of behind-the-scenes maneuvering down there regarding budgets, and here's a situation where we have $5.3 billion in excess funding, and you would think that we would be able to come to a pretty good rapid agreement on how to deal with that, but I think in a situation where we have maybe too much money, then everybody wants their piece of the pie, and consequently, it's moving at a very snail's pace. So we'll have to see if we can get some progress, maybe when you're back here two weeks from now.
I hope so, and I hear from Barry Ehrens that he would not be surprised if this went beyond Memorial Day to close out the session.
Mayor, I'm sorry, would you mind if I asked a question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Tyler, can you explain again what "buy right housing" means?
Buy right housing, that is, the title of that bill is confusing because it was a strike everything bill, and so that was, the original bill was something that was very detrimental to cities because of zoning and other abilities we have, and it did not progress at all, so it was used as a strike everything bill to create a housing study committee. So that's part of the old title. The new title is the Housing Study Supply Committee.
Thank you.
But it still retains its original title in order to confuse you and everybody else in the state. That's what strikers do.
They did a pretty good job of it, let me tell you.
Thank you, Tyler.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to item 9B then.
Adoption of ordinance number 2022-1785, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of real property to Founding Fathers Properties LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said sale. Tyler, can you go ahead and share, since we don't have the appropriate camera angles today?
Let me make sure.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam, can you see that?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Perfect. All right. This, as you heard, is the sale of real property owned by the city of Prescott at 215 and 223 North McCormick Street. I'll give a little bit of background about how we reached this point, and then some details on the sales agreement. This property was given to the city just over 10 years ago by Dr. Kravitz of the Pulmonary Foundation, and at that point in time, it was given with a deed restriction that it was supposed to be used for fire use only. We didn't have the need as a city to use it for that, so largely it sat, it sat there vacant, but was used for mostly storage over the last 10 years. Once the deed restriction was up, the city council directed staff to put it out to bid as we follow our city code to do that and to see what interest we'd have on the property. So after doing that, we posted it per our city code locally once a week for three weeks, but we also went beyond that. We had this published for several months, and we also listed it on LoopNet, the commercial real estate service, in order to generate some more interest in the property. There were three bids that were submitted, and Founding Fathers Properties LLC was the successful bidder. Their bid offer is for $466,000, and the building appraised at $450,000. So diving into the proposal, we asked bidders to not only tell us the price they were willing to pay, but also submit information on what they would like to do with the property. And in reply, this is what we received from Founding Fathers, was a mixed-use, multi-story building that had several functions within it, including a brustillery, tasting room, a food hall, some loft and rentals, co-work space, and a rooftop bar. So this is what was submitted with the bid price, and this was brought to council previously in an executive session to review. I do want to touch on just a couple of items in the sales agreement. We have a standard boilerplate agreement, but we have amended that in working and negotiating with the purchaser, and I'll go through, there's about four or five of these points I want to make since they kind of break away from the typical boilerplate agreement we have. You can see number two there is the sales price of $466,000. Number three says that the buyer agrees that within five years from the date of closing that they'll complete the mixed-use development project as described in the exhibit that you just saw, or as amended, and ultimately approved by the city, which would be the final concept. If the buyer fails to complete the final concept within five years, then they agree to pay the city an amount of $50 per day as liquidated damages until that final concept is completed. If the general contractor for the final concept certifies in writing to us, and we agree in writing that more than 40% of the project has been completed at the end of the five-year period, then we can agree in writing to extend the agreement and to forego those liquidated damages. Number four states that the buyer agrees that at the end of the three years from the date of the close of escrow, they'll provide us a written report, a progress report really on the final concept, and demonstrate to us that it will be completed within five And number five, the city understands that the buyer will bring forward another final concept, a mixed-use development project, for approval by the city, and this would come to the city council. This concept will propose a possible five-story project. However, the buyer understands and agrees that any height variance requested will have to obtain and go through the process just like anybody else to receive that approval, and this agreement in no way guarantees a height variance. And finally, the last point I want to touch on is that if the concept is not approved by the city, if that final mixed-use development concept comes and is not approved, then the buyer gives the city the right of first refusal to purchase the property back at the same amount of $466,000, and the city would have 60 days to exercise that right. So that, those are all elements that were negotiated with the buyer. At this point, we'd also like to make a note that the buyer has requested that the close of escrow occur at least 60 days from the time of this approval. They are performing a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 environmental analysis on the property, and also a soils test to determine if the project can occur with the soil that's currently there. They've communicated to me that they have all intents and purposes to purchase and develop the property, no matter the results of those tests. They might just have to change the final concept before they bring it back to the city council. And I know that Mr. Grant Casades here from Founding Fathers. Maybe, Grant, do you have anything you want to add at this point?
Yeah, sure. Man, that's a really cool design. I didn't even know we were doing that, so. No, so that's the projected design. We'd like to go five stories, so over the course of the last year and a half, sitting on several of the city council, or city meetings and kind of what's going on in development downtown, there's the proposal, the possibility of getting approval from the city for five stories. So the projected project you see in front of you, or a couple slides ago, was four stories, but we'd like to go five just for highest and best use of that location. Does come with two parking lot structures. I believe right now each floor would consist of about 78 parking spots, which we'd open to the general public. The team that we're working with, once we kind of close on this deal, is pretty much ready to move pretty quickly on making this possible, and we're trying to maximize the most amount of local assets that we have, so we've been talking to a lot of the local contractors, developers, builders, in order to come together and keep as much of this project within the city and maximizing everybody's resources here instead of going outside the city for the completion of this project. So it is a rather large project. I think all said and done, current price point, what you guys see is somewhere around $35 to $45 million, depending on obviously the market and where we stand. We have a couple other moving pieces, so if those happen, the project would be a little bit larger than that. But the final one, as of yesterday afternoon, Phase 1 came back with kind of their report, and then Phase 2 is about a 60-day wait time, and so there's nothing that we can do to speed that up, but we are working with NACOG to help facilitate expedite that as fast as possible. So that's kind of where the 60 days came from.
Councilwoman Moore.
I'd like to ask Grant a question, if I could, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Grant. Are you familiar with the Granite Creek Corridor Plan?
I am.
I was just wondering if you're incorporating design elements to be consistent with that plan, particularly to protect that riparian habitat between your existing property and the new property to enhance that for recreation and keep it wild and scenic?
Yes, absolutely. So I think the Granite Creek Corridor is a massive added value plus to our community. I grew up here and from here. A lot of us have obviously been here. That entire riparian way, that 1.6-mile stretch, has been largely underutilized for the last 20 or 30 years. I know myself and several other individuals from Prescott area young, P-A-Y-P, Prescott area young professionals, was kind of involved in this conversation about four years ago, and then it moved over to city council and the Chamber of Commerce. So I've been very up to date and kind of kept in the know and just being proactive on what's going on. I know for us at Founding Fathers Collective, we've invested about $120,000 into cleaning up the Granite Creek Corridor in our 100-yard stretch, and so with this project, it'd be the same thing. How do we maximize the space? How do we kind of keep it, you know, highest and best use for the citizens as well as the tourists and everybody else that comes here that are investing into our community through tax dollars or just living here? So we want to partner with the city along with the rest of the individuals that own pieces of property along that riparian way to really just add value to Prescott, so.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say, Grant, I think this is a great project. I think the concept kind of ties nicely with taking some, a building that frankly kind of represented a little bit of a blight in that part of Prescott, so I'm grateful that you guys took on this project and are willing to move forward with it. I wanted to ask Tyler a question. You mentioned the height variance component, and I just want to clarify from my understanding, any height variance would go to Board of Adjustments, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So wouldn't, next, it wouldn't come back to this body, it would go to Board of Adjustments, and then they would be the final arbiter unless there was an appeal to the county Superior Court? they would be the final arbiter unless there was an appeal to the county superior court?
First of all, and then George will pull you up here in a second, but we probably, an S U P from the Board of Adjustment, or is it a, just at a height? The issue is, is the board's decision a final decision, that the next review goes to Superior Court, or is it a recommending decision to the council? Because the Board of Adjustment is different from the planning.
They're quasi-judicial.
That only recommends.
Yeah, the Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial body. When they make a decision, it's a final decision, any appeal goes to Superior Court. I believe zoning's business regional, business general. Do you remember? I hate to admit, I can't remember what he's zoning.
I'm right with you.
Yeah. In most cases, unless it's a downtown business district or business regional, which is an unusual designation in the downtown, it has to go through the Board of Adjustment for a height variance. The business regional and downtown business district allow for the city council to grant a special use permit for height exceptions. The districts are set for 100-foot height, but requiring that additional approval by you over 50 feet.
Okay, so the answer to my question sounds like, yes, the Board of Adjustments would be the arbiter of the height variance. I just want to make sure I understood.
I just want to make sure. It either comes back to the council or it does not. Is it a final decision? And you're saying it's based on the zoning? And what's the zoning?
I don't think we know.
Yeah. So it's either going to be a decision by the Board of Adjustment that's final, and it can only be reviewed by the Superior Court on a record review, and/or if it's another zoning, it could come back to the council and then be.
Depends on.
Go up to Superior Court.
Anyway, I just wanted to make sure I understood the process for that variance. Thank you.
Yeah, Grant, I think this is pretty exciting, as far as its scope and its mixed-use design. I think particularly having those extra parking spaces there, I'm just reminded of that old saying by Yogi Berra, that the place is so popular, nobody goes there anymore, because the parking now at Founding Fathers is a big challenge. So I think adding those additional parking spaces, not only to this project, but any of those additional developments on the Granite Creek Corridor is going to be a real benefit to the city as well. So I wish you very good luck on this, and we'll watch as it develops.
Thanks, Mayor.
Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2022-1795.
Second.
A motion is second, please vote.
Aye, from Kathy Gruising.
You don't have to state your name every time, Mayor Proten. Pass is 7-0.
All right, we'll move on to the next item for consideration, that's 9C.
Approval of city contract number 2022-208, an intergovernmental agreement regarding the purchase of land on Glassford Hill. And Tyler, I'm actually being told let's try to not do this green share?
Okay.
Sorry.
Cancel. It looks like it's off now. Or you wanted it off, correct, Sarah?
Right, Nate. Okay.
Okay. It looks like it's currently off. Oh, can I see? We're going to go with that. Technology, it's great when it works, right? Okay. All right, good afternoon once again, members of council. Tyler Goodman with the city manager's office, here to talk about the intergovernmental agreement that we are proposing to you between us and the town of Prescott Valley and Yavapai County. I'll give a little brief background and then go through the bulk, kind of the meat of the IGA, and then go through a funding scenario that might help give some perspective to this, and would be happy to answer any questions. So this is formalizing an agreement that we've been negotiating and figuring out for the last several months. We've actually been meeting since January with the two other entities on this, and it's to purchase approximately 3,300 acres on Glassford Hill. All of the land in question is Arizona State Trust land. The duration of the agreement is for 10 years. The cost of the initial appraisal, which has already started and is just about complete, we've received the preliminary numbers, and I think the final report is due any day. That is, the cost of all those things, as well as any future costs associated with listing it, surveys, filings, anything with the state land department, all those costs would be shared among the three partners. Prescott and Prescott Valley would purchase the state trust lands within their municipal boundaries, and Prescott Valley will purchase about 500 acres that are within Yavapai, unincorporated Yavapai County. That would bring the total, our responsibility would be up to approximately 1,700 acres, and Prescott Valley up to approximately 1,600 acres. Each year, the partners will meet with Arizona State Parks and Arizona State Land to determine what parcels will be purchased by either Prescott or Prescott Valley. And each year, the partners will determine at that point what trails will be worked on. And you can see the squiggly lines all across the map, those are different trails. And you can see the jurisdictions to the left of the highlighted line here and down. This is all city of Prescott, or unincorporated Yavapai County up here, and Prescott Valley down here. So they'll meet each year to determine which trails will be built according to available budgets. Also, each year, it will be determined what funding is available from grants or state appropriation. The remaining amount needed to cover that fiscal year's purchase will be budgeted by Prescott or Prescott Valley respectively for the land in their jurisdictions. Yavapai County will budget to pay 35% of the remaining cost to purchase land in that fiscal year for both Prescott and Prescott Valley. The funding, the appraisal, the initial appraisal amounts we've received is anywhere between $10,000 to $14,000 per acre, and that'll vary based on acre, location, and size. So we wanted to give you an example of what this might look like. If Prescott were to purchase all 1,700 acres, and again, that could happen over the 10 years in chunks, at an average price of $12,000 an acre, that would equal $20,400,000. If, for example, we received $1,500,000 from the state as an appropriation to help with this, and the remainder was funded at a 50% grant from Arizona State Parks, and Yavapai County covered 35%, Prescott would be responsible for just over $6 million of that. So hopefully that gives you kind of a ballpark, a rough estimate of what it could look like. Again, we have flexibility in the agreement. If there's a bad year, for whatever reason, we don't have to budget any money to do it. If there's a great year, you might want to budget more. The council can also take different approaches. There's no limitations on funding mechanisms. It could come from a general fund, or potentially for recreational development out of some bed tax, or the council could decide to borrow and pay for it that way. There's a lot of options, a lot of flexibility to do it over the 10 years. Also, it ends after 10 years automatically, whether or not we've achieved the goal of obtaining all the land. So if in future years it looks like we really want what the council deems to be the most important, which might be the top and moving down the hill, let's say, just for an example, then you could focus on that, and you could prioritize purchasing the very top and moving outward over the years. It will be up to council to decide that going forward. So again, there's no yearly commitment by the council, but you can do as much or as little as is manageable. There's also been questions about the management. This is a lot of land, and do we have a structure for the management going forward? The partners, as we got together, really wanted to nail down a good agreement to move forward on how we're going to purchase this and share in those costs going forward. So we don't have an official management plan or agreement, but we have talked with State Parks, and we have flexibility in the future, and that is going to be one of the next priorities, is to figure out, once we obtain this land, how is it managed? It will be natural open space with some trails. Beyond that, there's not going to be a parking lot on the top, for example. So it won't be a typical state park with amenities, facilities, lots of things, lots of overhead to pay for and manage. But the partners will be coming together to create a reasonable management plan on this. With that, I hope I covered everything, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tyler. Counselor Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Tyler, I just want to go back to what you talked about funding mechanisms, and I guess this might be a question more for Mark Woodville, but I guess, do we have latitude within, oh, there's Mark. And do we have latitude within the bed tax to leverage those funds to offset this purchase?
From my understanding, and maybe between Mark and Matt, they can help me out, but for recreational development, we can use that as a funding source. So to what degree might be up to what it entails and what the council's wishes are.
Yeah, I definitely think it's something that could be looked at by legal. Whether open space represents recreation development is kind of the fundamental question. The other issue, of course, is bed tax is pretty well appropriated for other purposes, so there's not a large available balance there.
Fair enough. And then you talked about general obligation bond is another component to that as well, that's essentially levying an additional property tax on residents of Prescott?
That, yes, that is, also takes advantage of residents of Prescott to make that happen, which would, you know, which is how we have done open space and parks projects in the past. It's how Willow and Watson Lake was done in the 90s, as well as other things over the years.
So if we were to suggest, if we were to accept Tyler's math, that he just kind of trotted out for us, and say that maybe they were looking at a $6 to $10 million range of purchase price on this, is that something that we would then bring forward as a, you know, I mean, and that's over the course of 10 years, Tyler, is my understanding?
Correct.
So it's not, I mean, we're not talking about a huge, relatively speaking, not as big as it could be, money, but that's something we could take as a geo bond and put out to the voters, then?
Yes, absolutely, it's something council could take. And, you know, we're looking at this map up here, and there's a lot of other moving parts here that might be also rolled into a plan. You know, there's a gateway park, and there's other things in this whole area that are going to need to be funded from somewhere.
Right, okay. And I guess, to me, the difference, you have educated me on this, but the difference between a geo bond is a funding mechanism for a project like this?
Correct. Regular bonds, again, just the financing means, you still got to come up with a way to make the monthly payments, but a geo bond has its own revenue stream.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Counselor Tenney.
So I really appreciate the good questions about how the funding will work. It sounds like there's a tremendous amount of flexibility over the course of a decade here, and I love that we're partnering with Yavapai County and Prescott Valley. One of the pieces of feedback we receive regularly is, why don't we partner with our neighboring communities more on water issues, open space issues, transportation issues? And here's a terrific example of doing that. So that's all super exciting. The most exciting aspect of this to me is making that beautiful part of the world a little bit more accessible to recreation. I've been digging around and hiking around back in those areas for 39 years now, and it's really spectacular. And I'm super excited about the pieces that we acquired from AED, the pieces that we're looking at acquiring from the Seaver family. And this is just kind of the icing on that cake, is where I'm concerned. So I really appreciate all those who have put in a lot of time and effort into bringing this to reality.
Thank you, members of council. Counselor Tenney, Councilor Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
You know, Tyler, it's about time. What I'm saying is, it's about time that people got together with Prescott in a regional effort to purchase this property. Up until now, Prescott's been the low-hanging fruit, and basically has been expected to buy whatever open space was available. And so it's nice to have Prescott Valley and the county, surprisingly, step up to do this with us. It's much appreciated.
Yeah, I think clearly this is a broad benefit, not only to our two towns and cities, but for the county itself. It'll continue to be an ecotourism destination. It's very unique in its topography, and being able to provide more access to its use is bound to be a huge benefit to the area overall. And you're right, being able to work together with the three primary entities, all agreeing to share some of the costs of moving it forward, being able to split the costs, so it's kind of an equal partnership for many, many aspects. And then also recognizing that the state land trust here is finally starting to loosen up its grip a little bit on some of the state land, and be able to provide it for the use of our citizens, both here and throughout the state. And quite frankly, I think this is going to attract people from all over the country. So that's kind of a unique opportunity that we're experiencing here with the state land department, and also the state department of Parks and Recreation, wanting to work with us to be able to funnel some of this potential state funding into this project. So I think that's why it really was the impetus for getting this cooperative group together, because it looks like there's going to be a real chance to make this happen. So it's really more of a contractual agreement between the parties as we continue to investigate funding sources and even be able to come up with a correct and reasonable valuation of the properties under consideration. So do we have any public comment?
We do, Mayor. Michael Parrish. And I'm going to be passing around a document that Mr. Parrish asked to.
Can this be put over the overhead at all?
No.
Okay, let's see. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Thank you for letting me talk to you. I recently moved here from Pennsylvania. We had open space issues there, a little bit different than this. Wasn't the Bureau of Land Management or anything like that, but the city and the counties and the state would buy areas of land from farmers and then say, okay, we own the land and you can farm it, but you can't develop it, because we were having rampant development problems where I was from. We lived north in Pennsylvania in the Allentown area, and I'm glad to see this. One of the reasons why we moved here is that we have relatives in Phoenix and California, but one of the big things when we bought our property is this trust land that we're overlooking. The handout I have in front of you is a little confusing, but you got to turn it sideways, first of all. This is in reference to State Trust 820-059S that's contiguous with the ranch at Prescott, Unit 9 Mystic Heights. And you can't see it in the slide, the left-hand corner, if you come down. That's the very bottom piece. If you look at the map, you have to turn it the other way. One reason why I think it's important, first of all, of course, the residents, there's 27 homes there. We want to preserve that open space and back there. We're not going to kid you, we want to see that. But huge wildlife corridor. I've never seen so many animals in my life. Deer, avellina, road runners, lizards, snakes, you name it, it runs across there. And I believe it's a wildlife corridor. What I've seen, I've been told that, and I think it's important to preserve that. The other thing is, it didn't make it on this list, but the circle trail directly across the parkway to the west would connect up in that area, right through that little parcel. So we would like the city to acquire that existing trust land contiguous to Unit 9, open space easement in Mystic Heights, as one of the next purchases to preserve it as a conservation area. And that's the green and yellow area bordered in red. That's the big outline on the page, you have to turn it sideways again. And then to consider the low, medium-density portion of the parcel, that's the yellow piece in the southwest corner, represented by the yellow triangle, to be rezoned as part of the new conservation area, once you've purchased it. Not a big piece of land, but I think it's really important to the city. I think that it makes a lot of sense that it's one of the closest pieces to the city. And rather than, if you're doing this over 10 years, buying this stuff as patchwork, and then all of a sudden, something changes, who knows what happens in the future, and then you can't get it, how do you make this land usable? I think it needs to be done in a contiguous fashion, starting at one end, hopefully on our side, and moving up. So I think that's about all I have to say. Anybody have any questions? Hope it made sense to you, and thank you for your service. I'm really glad about the IGA, I'm glad to hear about this, and really hope you guys vote for it. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Certainly. Go ahead, Mayor Protan.
Thank you. I am very excited that we're having this conversation. Glassford Hill has been on the list to be preserved for at least 20 years. Not too many communities that I know of have a beautiful, pristine, extinct volcano in their midst. And preserving Glassford Hill would be very important to our community as far as our quality of life, and it would be very important for promoting ecotourism, because it's so unique. So I am just so excited that we're having this conversation and moving forward on this project with regional cooperation. Thank you.
Any additional public comment?
No, Mayor.
Any additional comments or concerns from the council? I'll entertain a motion, then.
I recommend a move, move to approve City Contract Number 2022-208.
Second. If a motion is second, please vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Pass the 7-0.
Very good. Moving on to Item 9D.
Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-1819, rescinding Resolution Number 2021-1798, and accepting a revised council policy for naming of city facilities. As council is aware, in October of 2021, a policy was adopted for the naming of city facilities. Since that time, council has approved the naming of the Centennial Center, which is now the Marlin Kirkendall Centennial Center, as well as the dedication of a future road at the airport to Major Frank Shell. During that process, there were some issues and concerns raised by council about some of the wording of the policy. And so staff has been working since that time to make revisions to address those issues. And that is the new draft policy that is before you today.
Does anybody want to address the details?
Go over that if you'd like, Mayor.
Would you please?
Sure.
Just go over the red lines and the justification of what parts of that policy we're considering for alteration.
Of course. So there were some concerns raised regarding actually renaming facilities. Councilman Moore had mentioned that specifically. We did remove the wording rename, so that the actual full name of the facilities that are being changed are not being taken away. It's an addition. We also addressed the funding for any application that is approved. The individual or group that requested the naming will be responsible for all of the final costs associated with the updated signage at the location. Additionally, there was some concern discussed during the process involving the Centennial Center regarding duplication of documents and applications. So we also made an addition in there that all applications and supporting documentation need to be original, and duplicated form applications will not be considered or counted in the count. And we also addressed the applications that may come in for the same facility after the 30-day comment period has begun on another. And those applications would be addressed at the pre-scheduled council meeting, and council would be able to make a determination on whether or not they wanted to vote on the original applications that were being considered or continue, and then discuss and review them at a future meeting to include the newly received applications. I believe that covers it.
Yeah, I know that as I went through all the public comments that were presented for the Centennial Center naming, I noticed that there were really a large number of copied forms where people were just signing off on it. And even in some cases, the form referenced the fact that Marlin Kirkendall was someone's father, and the person just copied that and signed off on it. And obviously, they were not a member of the family. So I just felt that we were getting to a point on some of these potentially controversial naming proposals, where it would be one group trying to outless the number of supporters without really having firsthand support that we could evaluate, knowing that they really did have a personal interest in having this proposal move forward. So I felt by having our original letters of support, it would be much more legitimate. And we also heard from some people that made potential requests for doing some extremely elaborate proposals, like a life-size bronze. Well, if anybody knows how much it costs to create a life-size bronze, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. So if we say, well, if someone is making a proposal, and they know that they're going to be responsible for developing the funding and the cost, not only for the proposed statue, or even changing names and a lot of signage, that should be the responsibility of the people that want this to happen. And I think if they do understand that, and they are willing to do the fundraising for it, then it's much more likely we could give it some legitimate We also came into the situation where after proposals had been presented and were in the process of being considered by the council, then additional information was submitted, maybe at the very last minute, a 30-day comment period. So I figured that probably needed to be limited, so that we could consider the validity and the value of the proposal itself and not have very last-minute additional information come in at the last moment. So those were the, really, the sources of why we wanted to make this a minor fine-tuning of the policy. And at this point, does anybody have any other questions about the reasoning for it? Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
In that case, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-1819.
Second. Motion is second, then please vote.
Aye. Thank you. Pass the 7-0.
Very good. We'll move on to Item 9E.
Approval of ANX 21-004 and REZ 21-009, a request for an annexation of 6.158 acres and a rezoning from SF 35, Single Family 35, to MFH, Multi-Family High Density, on APN 114-06-104H, Address 202 North Cactus Drive. Owner, Cactus Ranch Mobile Home Community, LLC, applicant, Marie Sharkey.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a request for annexation and a subsequent rezoning for a piece of property that joins the city of Prescott. Property is currently located in a county just off of Overland Road. The access to the property is from Overland for the most part. The property is an existing manufactured home park. It is zoned, single-family, in the county. And the proposal is to annex it into the city with the intention of connecting the park to the city's water system. The park currently has, has had wells on the site. The wells have been problematic. They are currently hauling water and through a process that's rather cumbersome to try to provide water to the residents. They have no infrastructure for fire suppressions, such as fire hydrants. The applicants came to us, actually have come to us several times over the years, seeking an annexation. At this point in time, the city is pursuing the review of the annexation because the park has now connected onto the city sewer system. They did that several years ago. And now they have requested access to our water system. In order to access water, as we know, what a policy says, you must annex into the city. And they are proposing to do that and desire to annex into the city for that reason. Property is zoned R1L35. That's a county zoning for small, excuse me, for a large lot, single-family residential. 35 is 35,000 square foot per lot. The manufactured home park is a non-conforming use under the county zoning. The proposal is to bring it into the city through the annexation process to match up with our equivalent zoning, which is SF 35, which would leave the park non-conforming to the city rules. And then subsequent rezoning, and you have, in fact, three motions, which we'll talk about in a couple of moments, which will bring the park in, zone it initially, and then proposal to rezone it to multi-family high density, which is the lowest-level zoning within the city of Prescott that allows manufactured home parks. The other zoning that would allow them by right are commercial zonings, and this area is not appropriate for commercial, given its location, access, street sizes, and neighboring properties. You can see the property at just, sort of a butt some of the city. It's a little bit odd to look at it from this perspective. They're about 30 feet below that commercial property that's to the, to the west of them. There is an elevation difference there that makes a big difference in the interoperability. The route via Overland, Overland Road is a much lower-level elevation and connects to the park. Park's current layout is actually pretty well laid out. It is a very quiet, very well-maintained property. It's something that provides some somewhat more affordable housing. We try not to use the word affordable, because it varies depending on what it is, but certainly this is more affordable than a lot of the newer developments we're seeing come in. And again, it is 52 manufactured homes plus a laundry building on the site now. They provided us with a very detailed site plan indicating water and sewer infrastructure and the location of three fire hydrants for future fire protection of the property. And we have recommended, as staff usually does, for the rezoning to be tied to substantial conformance to the site plan, to prevent the rezoning simply occurring and having something else occur on the property at a future date. Any modification to this site in the future would require coming back to council and requesting a modification of the site plan. With that brief conversation about the motions, we do have the applicants and owners here who can speak to this. And I note that the Water Service Agreement is your next item on the agenda. I have included some information in here about that. The annexation needs to be moved to approve, if that's the council's desire. You would set the initial zoning as the equivalent to the county zoning, as a requirement of state law, and then the action to rezone it to multi-family high density, so that it is a conforming use and doesn't violate our Land Development Code. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Again, we have representatives of the owners here, and I will be happy to talk to you about the Water Service Agreement subsequently.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so, George, I guess the first question I have is, is there, so we don't have any zoning that could include something that, like, it's just all mall, multi-family high density? Like, there's no other zoning that could service buyer? Because you mentioned this, and I think when I was emailing Brett and you about this, you kind of came up with that notion, that this is by right the only way we could do the zoning, once we modify it after the annexation.
When we look at rezonings like this, we look for the lowest level of zoning. You recall, we've talked to you before about the upside-down pyramid, or the pyramid of uses. The lowest-level zoning, the closest to residential, that allows the use by right, so that we don't create a non-conformance, which our Land Development Code and state law suggests you shouldn't do. And multi-family high is the lowest level. The next levels above that are commercial zoning districts, which allow the use by right, but they also allow other commercial uses, which are inappropriate, given the circumstances, the geography of the location.
Makes sense to me. I just wanted to make sure my understanding was correct about that. I do have a question for the applicant, if I can.
I'm the applicant, Marie Sharkey, and this is the trustee of the owner of Sun Home Communities, Stuart Gross. And we're here to answer anything you want.
Thank you for coming down today, and I appreciate that when we first took up this, well, at least when I was part of it, at the Water Issues Subcommittee, you also attended that meeting. So I appreciate you making the effort to attend these meetings. I just have one question for you. If we approve the annexation and then the water application as well, how soon will you move to put in the infrastructure to make sure you have access to water?
I'll answer that question after that. We've already had conversations with Public Works. I have met with Greg Dotzis, Gwen Roswitch, and Eric Bay is no longer part of the staff. And the joint, and, excuse me for not saying this earlier, but George has been a wonderful worker, helper, and we've been partnering on this project. And with the help of George and the Fire Marshal's Office and Public Works, we came up with that conceptual plan. And we have to work ahead on that. It's not that simple, because the water line that runs on 69, basically, where we have to tie into that, is, do you remember the map that you had, George?
Okay, you can use that one.
That's state highway, and the state is involved in that. And the road that leads down to the park is the county, where we have to run the line. And the water line belongs to the city. So I was waiting until today and see the outcome of today, and I was waiting to set up a meeting with the county and the state, and then also the city folks, so we can detail. There are so many issues that, in Mr. Bay's conceptual plan, that might be modified a little bit. We're ready to start negotiating on that immediately. I just found out last night from a friend of mine in the business, there's a 150-day lead time on getting 10-inch or 12-inch ductile iron pipe.
Wow.
Yeah. So as soon as we can work out an initial approval, or concept, a detailed conceptual approval, we'll start the design, get all the approvals from the three different agencies, and we'll order the pipe immediately on our own. And we have a contractor--
So, so my sense from what you're saying to, to us today is that you are going to move as quickly as possible--
As quickly as possible.
And move really quickly to get this done. And I imagine that that makes sense, because it sounds like, from what I understand, your residents are already, you're having to haul in water already for that.
Well, there's a little bit of a misconception, and the pump is still working, but at times it gets dry.
Sure.
And at those times, we haul. And if I can step back for a minute, just for the council's edification, this is the third time I've appeared before different committees. And it's wonderful, because each time I come, this is a piece of everything that you're talking here. The first item, the Founding Fathers Group, that they're still here, is a nice contribution to the growth of the city of Prescott. And it's basically downtown, and it's going to provide entertainment and nice, nice housing. But the word affordable housing isn't used much now, and the politically correct name now is workforce housing. And that's what we offer. We're people, and I think there's some of the people here, and they're worried that the rezoning is going to, we're out to, you know, change it and put up a 500-unit apartment. Not at all. I did the due diligence six and a half years ago, when Sun Home Communities bought this property. And my recommendation to Mr. Gross and his partners, don't buy it. There's problems with the water, and there's problems with the wastewater. And Sun Home Communities spent $400,000 to tie into the city wastewater system. I can give you guys credits on the wastewater that we do. Now we have to spend $500,000 to run that line and provide fire service. And we're just wanting, Sun Home Communities has over 2,000 units in New Mexico and Arizona, at 11, 12 different sites.
22.
22 different sites. That's all we do. They don't make fancy high-rise or anything. They also own a Bradshaw apartment, and all they've done was upgrade those. So all we want to do is be part of the Prescott community and serve a part of Prescott that wants to be served, and maintain housing and then-- wants to be served, and maintain housing and improve the quality of that housing for people in that area. And that's all we're doing, and we're moving as quickly as we can. We don't want to pay to haul water. We don't want to bring in water that has questionable quality. We want to be part of your system. As George said, we went to you guys, to George, a couple, three years ago, you didn't want to entertain this, now you're willing to do that. And our water use here, we're asking for 5,000 gallons a day, and that's based on actual records of use for the past five years. You have new communities coming in that by law and requirement, a new home requires up to 1,000 gallons. We're using 100 gallons a day. So what we're doing here, we want to get it done as quickly as possible, to answer your question. I'm looking at about a five-month design period, five to six months, with getting the approvals, design and approval. It's going to take time working with three different agencies, and we have a contractor ready to go. It's probably another month or two to do the, install the new pipes that connect into the city system, bring them up to the boundary, or the new pipe will just come to the northern and eastern boundary, and then we will bring a line into the park to tie into the existing distribution system. It doesn't take a lot of work.
Excellent. And like I said, I just, you know, I understand that there's delays going on with everything right now, supply chain issues are hampering everything.
Yeah.
So I appreciate, I just wanted to get an idea of what your timeline looks like. The other question I have for you is, are the units on your property, do they, will they have their own individual meters, like sub-meters?
We have a master meter, and I think we'll continue to have a master meter with the city. City will give us water, we'll pay for the water off that meter. In order to control use and to monitor use, there's each unit, it has an existing meter.
Okay.
And that will be internal, and that's how the management will make sure they're allocating the proper amount to each unit.
Excellent, thank you. Does answer my questions.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Just a moment, Councilman Tenney first.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I know that this agenda item is specific to the annexation and rezoning, but it's certainly tied very closely with our next agenda item, which is water. So if I might continue in the same vein as Councilman Montoya, can I ask, when we do have to haul in water, where's the, where do you get that water from?
We've used two or three different companies over the last, over the last five years, and as Murray said, you know, sometimes we do have to do it, sometimes we don't.
Sure, sure.
I know that one was getting it from the Prescott Valley, and I guess, you know, I mean, they were reputable companies, but I'm not, one, the water was coming from Prescott Valley. I think one was.
It's licensed, liable water.
Sure, sure.
Yes, I think one was coming from somewhere in Prescott, and maybe one from Chino, you know, but Prescott Valley, I'm positive that was one.
Sure, okay. All the same aquifers here, it's not coming from out of the area. It seems to me that this is exactly what we intended when we passed the water policy at our last meeting, which is that if there's an area that needs water that's not currently in the city limits, but it's adjacent to it, would qualify for annexation into the city. And this is a perfect scenario, which we need water, these folks are there, they need water, hauling it in from our city wells or neighboring city wells to replace makes no sense. I see a public safety piece with being able to have fire hydrants in there and quality of life pieces and whatnot going forward, so this is something I'd be in favor of.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I would just like to comment that I look at this annexation as a public health and safety issue. They had a failing septic system that was potentially contaminating our watershed, and now their well is failing, and there's 50 units there of people who live here in Prescott, work here in Prescott, and it is workforce housing, affordable housing, low-income housing. I drove through the complex twice, once during the day and once during the evening, and it was very well-maintained and quiet. One concern I did have was, even though it's an annexation, we're not requiring a separate written agreement outlining the terms as far as infrastructure, but city staff and legal has reassured me that we can go by the site plan and use our current codes to get this community hooked up. I would like to ask the applicant, has he hired a civil engineer to design the infrastructure for this project yet?
Murray Sharkey, P.E., licensed in the state of Arizona since 1993, in the state of New York since 1970. I since I'm a 22074, so I think they have, yeah.
So you know, you know that engineer well.
Yeah, I know him pretty well. He's a terrible boss, but.
Does that answer your question, Councilman?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. And the taxpayers are not going to bear any of the costs for hooking up this project to the city water lines.
Unless you want to share it with me, but we're planning, and that's why we have a $500,000 budget to pay for that, and hopefully the new utilities manager can work with us. Initial plan to satisfy his desires was to tie in to the water line right on State Highway 69 on that turnoff, which would be a horrible thing to do. So if we tie in about 10 feet away from that, it'll make things a lot easier. But I'm working with, primarily with, not Craig, but Gwen, right now, and I don't know if Eric Bay's been replaced, but we'll be working with that staff, and everybody's going to be happy and have to sign off on that.
Councilman Sharkey, did you have a question?
No, I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Can I say one thing about the funds? The funds are available right now. It's not like we have to go out and get financing or whatever, so we're ready to start, you know, with the pipe or whatever we can do immediately.
So are you going to bring ductile iron all the way in?
Yes, and we might go PVC in the park, but what we have to do to get the water to the park, and if you look at that plan, it comes from 69, it runs down the edge of that road over the new bridge, and we already have an agreement to use, mount the pipe on the side of the bridge when we cross the creek. And then it comes down and make the turn south, and it stops at the end. And if they want DIP, you can put DIP, or I don't mind, HDP, because the elevation changes might work a little better.
Ductile iron is required inside city limits.
Use ductile, we'll use ductile iron to bring the water supply.
When you're dealing with that kind of topography up there, I know you've got slopes and almost a little, almost a cliff-like condition. Making sure that that ductile iron is not subject to future failure, I think, is a good example of why we decided to do that. Why, and make ductile iron in the requirement for.
Not a problem. And that, and again, we'll be in concert with the Public Works Department, and whatever they request, that's what we're going to do.
You have two entrances and exits, egress and ingress. Is there?
Three.
Exit and buttermilk along with the overland?
And I think there's a second one, if you go straight up, keep on going on, whoa, there's one there, and then there's one just west of that.
Yeah, that's in good shape. I mean, I had a, I had a pretty good friend there who was a World War II veteran, Maurice Doronker, who lived there for quite a few years until he passed away, I think, like three years ago. So I spent quite a bit of time visiting him and looking at the overall traffic flow and the other residents of the area, so I know this is the type of workforce housing, so to speak, that is really sorely needed in the city, so being able to make sure it continues to be available, I think, is something that we're looking forward to, and certainly your plans here and your ability to know how to manage this well with your other properties is something that the city will find very beneficial.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor, I'll just ask, I'll answer Mayor Protem's question as to whether the taxpayers will be responsible for the infrastructure costs, and the answer is no. The property owners will be responsible for the infrastructure costs.
Very good, thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I move to approve ANX21-004.
Second. Motion is second, please vote.
Aye. Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to establish initial property zoning as single-family 35, SF35.
Second. Motion is second, please vote.
Aye. Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to.
I'm just going to say, on the rezoning, they are public hearing, so we'll make the announcement, if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak on the rezoning, now would be a good time to speak. I understand our clerk doesn't have any cards, but.
Do we then need to make a motion, Matt, to close public hearing?
I would.
I make a motion, Mayor, to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion is second, please vote.
Aye. Passes 7-0.
Mayor, finally, I move to approve the rezoning of the annexed property to multifamily high-density MFH to make use, make the use conforming with the rezoning subject to the site plan.
Second. Motion is second, please vote.
Aye. Passes 7-0.
Excellent, welcome to Prescott. Now we'll see if we can get you some water. All right, we'll move to item 9F.
Approval of Water Service Application Number WSA21-024, submitted by Cactus Mobile Ranch Home Community Association, LLC, Prescott. Location APN114-06-104H comprising 6.37 acres, in township 14 North, range 02 West, section 34 SE14, NE14, SE14.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Quick presentation from George, yes?
Not really, I'm happy to answer the questions.
I just have one question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
George, I think this has probably been brought up multiple times before, but can you just tell us how much, with the retirement of the wells on this property, what is the water that's being returned in terms of, to the water portfolio for Prescott?
It's 26.5 acre-feet, and then the allocation back through the Water Service Agreement is 6.33. So.
So we're netting like 20 something?
20 acre-feet to the city's portfolio.
Yeah, extinguish some of the credits to our portfolio.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional presentation information, George?
No, sir, not unless you have questions.
All right, any other questions from council? Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve WSA21-024.
Second. Motion is second, please vote.
Aye. Passes 7-0.
There we go. Okay, you got your water. Welcome to Prescott, and you're well-watered as soon as you can get your pipes delivered and your easements approved, so we look forward to that development and having you manage this workforce housing development. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to item 9G.
Approval of City Contract Number 2022-207 for the purchase of one fire aerial platform ladder truck from Rosenbauer South Dakota LLC, using Sourcewell Contract Number 113021-RSB.
Good afternoon, Council, Holgerdor Fire Chief. As we get into this discussion, I want to acknowledge that, standing in front of you, about $1.8 million is a significant expenditure for the citizens, and we don't take that lightly. One thing I do want to cover right up front is some of the cost escalations that were involved in this project. As I was preparing for this role, watching city council meetings involving the ARPA funding, I know you, as a body, have discussed this purchase for quite a while. The primary reason for the cost escalation, when I did my research around this, is pandemic-related raw material costs. The steel and the aluminum that goes into manufacturing this apparatus, over the last two to three years, has escalated anywhere between 150 to 200% on the raw material costs. And of course, the manufacturer is going to pass that on to us at some point. Not surprising that we see this large of a price tag. That being said, I want to briefly talk about the capability of this apparatus and then get into, very briefly, why we're recommending this purchase at this time. The Prescott Fire Department currently maintains two ladder trucks. Those ladder trucks have the capability of 75 feet of ladder extension. They're called a straight-tip aerial, which means they don't have a bucket, as you see here on the, on the end of that. It's what's traditionally called in the industry a quint, and that means it has a pump, a tank, it has the capability of having an aerial. However, with the current risk in the city, particularly in the older parts of town, we're not able to safely reach some of the rooftops that we see. The other component of our risk that we have in our community is larger homes, some litter in the interface, that we require this type of a reach. So this ladder truck from tail to tip is 101 feet, you add the four to five feet of the bucket, and that gets you about 105 feet of reach. Now, I want to make sure you understand, it's not 105 feet in terms of the height of a building, because you have to think about the angle, so you have to do a little bit of geometry. That's why we have promoted engineers, because they do that geometry on the fly as they come up to the emergency, so setback is important. But the capability that this ladder truck gives us is significantly different than what we currently have, and meets our adopted community risk assessment and standards of cover that we did a couple of years ago and brought before this body as part of our accreditation. Our critical task analysis, as well as our capability statements in that document, call for additional capability in our aerials. Now, the other thing I want to highlight here is that currently, we do not have bucket-type capability in our fleet. There's a significant safety parameter to that. When a firefighter is operating either to rescue above grade or do a ventilation, and they're operating off of a straight-tip aerial, there's a significant difference between safety that a firefighter encounters when they're able to stand on a platform like this versus being on the extended tip. So imagine a citizen getting rescued from, let's say, a third or fourth-story window, stepping onto a platform like this versus having to be rescued onto the straight tip of an aerial. There's a significant difference, not just in the way that the citizen would respond to that, but obviously also the firefighter's safety in this regard. The other piece of this is, you can see, this is a fairly weak application, so the truck that we're proposing is a Rosenbauer Cobra, and the reason why there is a Cobra to that is, you can see, it has that little articulating tip. So imagine the structures on Whiskey Row have a facade with a parapet, so the roof is a couple of feet below the top of the facade, and this enables us, basically, to get that truck above that parapet, articulate down, and allow either a rescue or firefighter to ingress and egress off the top of a roof in the older portions of our city a little bit more effectively. The capability of this truck, too, is a little bit of a regional asset as well, and I do want to highlight that. Currently, the only other aerial of this type that is in our region is owned by Cathma, and there's only one of those. So if that one happens to be down for maintenance or not available to us on a mutual aid assignment, we don't have this capability, and this would enable us to have, in the city of Prescott, this type of capability. The ladder truck that we're replacing, as you all know, is getting to the age of not being able to be reliably certified, and so we need to replace the aerial anyway. So my recommendation is that we do upgrade our capability to this aerial type. The current quint replacement cost would run as probably about $1.6 million, so there is a delta, definitely, that I do want to make sure that I'm very transparent about. But this capability that we do get and the safety margin that we receive, in addition to meeting the requirements in our planning documents, I do believe that is an expense that is worthwhile, and that will increase the capability of the fire department and the margin of safety for our residents. So with that, we do have members of our apparatus spec committee, Fleet Services here, to answer any questions you might have in addition.
Councilman Tenney.
Gee, thanks for your presentation. This helps me understand the need for this better. I'll be honest with you, I was really in favor of this until you mentioned geometry. Now I know there's math involved, I'm wavering a little bit. geometry. I know there's math involved. I'm wavering a little bit. But I have a real question as well.
Aye.
Yeah, there you go. I have a real question as well, which is, this is, this is upgrading and replacing another truck that we've got. Is there useful life in that? Do we hang on to that? Do we toss that in the recycling bin? What, what happens to that old truck?
So that would be something we would auction off, normal disposal of our fleet assets. We do have another quint in the system that would stay. So it would basically have a replacement of that existing older aerial.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Once I saw the Cobra that you have on the decal, I got more in favor of it. Just kidding. So, Chief, I really appreciate your detail, and when you, you emailed me back about this truck as well, the detailed information you provided about the enhanced capacity of that. And I really appreciate you taking time to go into it today. I just want to make sure I understand what you were saying just a moment ago in terms of the transparency piece. If we were to try to one-for-one replace the, what you're calling the quint, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
It would be significantly cheaper than what we're buying. But the nature of our community is such that this is a real upgrade that's necessary to do. That's what I hear you saying.
That is correct. Yes.
All right. I appreciate that. And I think that, you know, this was probably one of the least controversial items that we talked about with ARPA funding. So I'm happy to see it moving along. I, I guess my only question, because of the price escalation we've seen, is there any way we can lock in this number today?
In essence, yes. That is why we're bringing this in front of you the way that we are, so we don't incur any further cost escalations. And as you see in the council memo, we are also putting things into the contract because it is a multi-year build, 18 to 24 months. So that we're locking in the pricing now and also buying the chassis ahead of time, but also holding back 50% of the funds so that we know if the manufacturer's going to perform, but do it at 2022 prices and not at 2023 or '24 when we take delivery.
That's.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any other comments? Any of your public comments?
No, Mayor.
I know that we have two ladder trucks, one of which is losing its certification within two years. So hopefully, this order will be completed and delivered in time to avoid a gap of certification. What about the other remaining ladder truck? How much longer does that have?
So it is approximately three to four years behind. Is that correct, Fleet Services? Yes, so three to four years. I believe that the initial units were bought somewhat in tandem with a delayed manufacturing. And so we will have to have this conversation. I'm really glad you brought this up. So one of the things that we are preparing to do in next fiscal year is to update our strategic plan in alignment with our risk assessment and standards of cover. And at that time, I want to look at our aerial capability, but also our entire unit. You, that matches the risk profile in our town and that is sustainable in the out-years as well. Ladders are something that is almost somewhat of a necessary even in the fire service. And I want to make sure that when we buy those, those are things that the residents can be sure that they're needed, they're in the appropriate location, and then the appropriate quantity. And this is definitely, like I said, going to be a regional asset as well. And I think with specialized apparatus of this type, regionalization is very responsible for the taxpayer, whereas for standard fire engine, that's something that's a little bit different in that regard. And so us bringing this to the table is, I think, a very smart investment for the citizens of Prescott that enables us to potentially defer or delay further investments down the road, depending on the strategy that you all are comfortable with.
How long does this accredited truck last? I mean, what is the accreditation? Gives me a little bit of relief. I know sometimes when people think about ladder trucks, they're just thinking about height.
Mm-hmm.
But many times, it's reach. I know we had an incident up in the, the ranch a couple of years ago where you had to go up way above the home to be able to reach out, to be able to get water on fire that had broke out in the back part of their property. So having that reach out to be able to get application to the area was very necessary when it wasn't necessarily all that high.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I know one of the other issues we're dealing with here in the city is, we have buildings around the Courthouse Plaza that do not have their upper floors sprinkled because of the high cost of bringing in uprights into the sprinkled areas. But they're allowed to continue to operate without that protection. So being able to have that type of a. Fire concern there is particularly important.
Mm-hmm.
And I know we're trying to find a way to provide some assistance in some of these buildings to get extended sprinklering up in those upper floors to make it not only safer for their buildings, but for the buildings that abut them.
Mm-hmm.
And also be able to have the property and building owners utilize that extra space that right now can't be used. But we've been working on that for quite a few months now, too, and trying to figure out a way around the, some of the restrictions on the gift clause in the state constitution.
There's another thing I do want to throw in here real quick to maybe round out the decision-making. That second ladder that's coming up for replacement, we've started to identify and investigate options for refurbishment of the chassis, which would be a significant cost savings if that is possible. Again, I can't promise that yet because we haven't fully done the research. But I think that's one strategy that for this type of a capital investment, even for this unit in the future, would be a good strategy to extend the life cycle of something like that. So that's something that I think is really important to mention as well, is new is not always the best strategy. The other component of ladders like this in town right now is, we do not run these as primary first-out pieces of equipment because they are so expensive to operate. The tires alone, you can see it's got a double axle in the back. Those tires wear out much quicker than on a regular fire engine. And so we cross-staff those unless we have to pull one into service because one of the primary engines is out. So that also extends the life of these pieces of equipment and reduces the operational cost.
Well, thank you, Chief. Unless anybody has any other questions, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2022-207.
Second. Motion is second, please vote.
Aye. Pass the seven zero.
Very good. That concludes our list of agenda items. I decided to restate a phrase from, from President Ronald Reagan. I think it shouldn't be forgotten and needs to be repeated frequently, especially considering some of the conditions that are going on in our federal government today. Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We didn't pass it on to our children in the bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on for them to do the same. Or one day, we will spend our sunset years telling our children and our children's children what it once was like in the United States when people were free. That concludes our meeting today. Thank you.